Great, we're gonna go ahead and officially call our school board meeting to order. We're gonna stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Jim, do you have any?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public. Allegiance stands one nation under God, in the name of the law, with liberty and justice for all.
We have any additions to our agenda?
Yes, we do.
Are we recording, Alicia?
Yes, we're recording. Thank you, Eric. And I'll turn the motion to approve our agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the additions.
Thank you, Jim.
I will second.
Thank you, John. Is there any discussion with the agenda? All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, so first we have presentations. We have Bridgette Pannett. And mine, Alicia King and Liz Mackwick. Welcome, welcome.
Just jump in, are we ready?
Yep, you're ready. Take it away.
Okay, so I think Alicia's got control of the slides. So yeah, I'm Bridgette, I'm a school social worker. I'm actually at Cheney Middle School and then the homeless liaison for West Fargo Schools. I'll let Alicia introduce herself.
I'm Alicia King, school social worker for Deer Creek Elementary and Legacy Elementary, and also the foster care liaison for the district.
I'm Liz Mackwick, Title I reading coordinator. And why this is connected is both of these programs fall underneath that Title I umbrella. And so I work with this group, so.
So, next slide. So this is just a definition of McKinney-Bento Act. So there is an educational definition, and then there's also HUD definition. So when we look at identifying students as homeless, this is a definition that we follow. So it's individuals who lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. This can be families that are sharing housing, that don't have their own place. They might be in a hotel. They might be in a shelter, living in their car. Even in the campgrounds in the fall, like out at the fairgrounds. We could identify those kids as well. So this is a definition that the school follows, not the HUD definition. The next slide. The role, any social worker within the district can identify students that meet the criteria under McKinney-Bento. Each school has a social worker that they work with. So really, the keys for McKinney-Bento is identifying those students so that we can make sure that they have the supports in place, and then that we're helping families with connecting them to resources within the school and in the community. The main goal of McKinney-Bento is school stability. So when a kid is identified during the school year under McKinney-Bento, that follows them for that entire school year. Just because then it provides them the right to stay within their home school. And then that following year, we would meet with that family again to determine, do they still meet the definition under McKinney-Bento? Or are they now in stable housing? And would they transfer schools? Or are they still within our school district? We really want to get kids enrolled as quickly as possible. So if we identify a student when they register, the law says that they have to start school immediately, so that next day. As long as we have those supports in place. There are some times that we may have to delay the process if they're on an IEP or need special accommodations. But otherwise, the law does say that we need to enroll them immediately. Really, I think since I started, I think eight years ago, I can't even remember anymore. I think we've, just with the number of social workers and how closely we're working with our schools, we've been able to identify a lot more students. I know our numbers have probably, I think the first year I started, the year before, there was maybe like 60 or something identified. And now we're over 200 identifying last year, and we're over 200 this year already. So I think within the last eight years, we've definitely improved our ability to identify, and the awareness, I think, has increased as well. We're always looking at the best interest of the kids. So is that getting more supports in place at school? Just whatever might be in the best interest of the kid. We have quite a few unaccompanied youth. A lot of times we'll see that in the high schools. But we have had, and unaccompanied means that they're not living with their guardian. So somebody else is caring for that child, whether it be a friend, another family member. But we do have several unaccompanied youth. And then data collection is really important with McKinney-Bento, just so we know how can we improve and what's the need? The kind of demographics of the kids and whatnot. Services provided, really, not even just our homeless families, but just our families in general. All of us social workers are always connecting our families to community resources. Are they needing that mental health, medical, dental care? Just what we can connect any of the kids to. A lot of us are helping families with applying for the benefits. So like our SNAP, which is the food assistance, insurance, even like free phones and Wi-Fi, housing assistance, and just all of those community-based programs. School supplies at the beginning of the year, just those basic needs, for sure during the winter. Like the snow pants, coats, hats, gloves, food, hygiene products, just the things that we take for granted. We're helping a lot of our families with getting. And then at the high school, now Liz can jump in here, but they've been able to put a tutor in place. And I think this is the first year, but Liz can speak more to that.
Yes, so we've got these McKinney-Bento grant dollars and really working. We have a retired teacher that has come back, which has been so great to have a professional supporting learners. And it's specific to this subgroup, as one of the goals of our McKinney-Bento grant is to help learners graduate. That's one of our biggest indicators of success, is making sure that these learners get their high school diploma. And so having that tutor in place has greatly impacted that cohort of kids getting the supports they need to improve their grades.
Is this the first year you have the tutor there, Liz?
It is, it is. It's a program we've been open and interested in working on for years, but the timing can be difficult. Oftentimes, it's difficult to get learners after school or before school because of other things that they need to take care of or work in the community and things like that. And during the school day, our teachers are oftentimes booked with their caseload and their teaching schedule. So this has kind of been a good need where it's a retired teacher of ours, that this is a passion and an area of interest of hers. And she's able to support them during the school day and work with learners during their advisories or during their off periods.
And since, do you have the kids been using it?
Yes.
You know?
Yes, we have. And we're kind of tracking which learners are using it and kind of tracking those grades to see the overall impact. So we're excited to see how the, so far, it's gone well. We couldn't start at the beginning of the school year. We had to wait a little bit, just for that six-month wait period. But now that we've kind of gotten started, looking to see how that's going to impact here, that quarter three, quarter four grades.
I think we can go to the next slide. So this is just the statistics since I've started in West Fargo. So it goes back to 2015, 2016 school year. I'll just let you kind of look at that for a couple of minutes. But yeah, so in 1516, there was 54 kids identified. And then last year, we had 274. So you can definitely see the increase since 2015. And then during COVID, our numbers did decrease a little bit, and that's probably, and it did nationwide, probably just because of all the virtual learning and kids not being in the classroom and probably sharing what their living situations were. So my guess is it was harder to identify, but you will see a little bit of a decrease during that 2020 school year. Next slide. This is just a little chart. I wish I would have started this when I first started, but I didn't. So in 2019, I started at the end of each month where our numbers were. So this year, we're kind of, we're trying to look at my own chart. We're pretty much on track, a little bit behind maybe where we were last year, but it just kind of shows maybe the months that we, like, are higher identifications. Typically, in the spring, we're seeing higher numbers. And I don't know necessarily why that is, but just something that I've been tracking for the last few years, anyway.
Bridgette, do you know if the kids kind of roll over or if they eventually come out of this? So the kids in 2020, in the 180, how many of those are in our numbers for 2024? So if they're still in school? Do you kind of know what family thing? Do they eventually get out of this cycle? Or do they kind of staying in?
So I don't know how many maybe overlap. Every year, we start from zero. So just because somebody was identified the prior year doesn't mean that they automatically qualify the next school year. So we do start at zero each school year. Also, we can look at if a family has maybe, maybe they're sharing housing and they're not choosing to find their own place. If it's stable and adequate, we wouldn't have to count them like for your, like for several years. So we can use our judgment. But it's a lot of questions that we're asking our families, like, are you looking for your own place? Do you want your own place? And if they say no, then they might be doubled up. But I wouldn't necessarily count them if they're not looking, you know, to be in their own place. I don't know if I answered your question very well. It's just, it's hard.
That's a tough, I knew it was going to be a tough question because you're asking it year after year if they remain in poverty and being homeless. So, thank you.
Yep. And then this is just, I know it's always nice to, like, when we talk about homeless, it's not necessarily a fun subject, but we do have some success stories that come out of it. And there's a reason for the law, is that school stability and ultimately that our kids are graduating. So this is one of our high school learners. They were kicked out of their home several times and had ended up, there was some abuse going on in the home, too. This was my specific story. So, but due to being kicked out of the home, the school social worker was able to identify the learner under McKinney-Bento. The learner was in the runaway shelter and couch hop. So we have some shelters in town when they're 18 that they can stay. Couch hopping is, you know, where they're kind of going from place to place, their friends-to-friends house. So this student was doing that for a while. Throughout that time, because they were able to be identified under McKinney-Bento, they were able to get transportation. So they were able to get to them from school. So they had that consistency of school. They were in a safe place, and they, you know, had daily meals. They were also able to continue in participating in extracurricular activities. So they are on the path for graduation. And it does look like the foster care system did step in, too. So, but this is one thing, like, when we can offer transportation for those kids to stay in school, that's huge. Because if they don't have a way to get to school, then how are they supposed to complete school? So I would say transportation is the biggest thing that we help with. But it's nice when it works out to be success like this. Next slide. Now Alicia's on.
Yeah, so this slide just gives you guys the foster care definition. So foster care is any 24-out-of-home placement for children whose parents are unable to care for them due to neglect, abuse, for whatever reason those parents are going through at that time. They're removed typically by a court order and placed in the custody of a public agency. So our human service zones, so like social services, the Division of Juvenile Services, or tribal social services. And then while they're in that care, their basic needs are met. So food, clothing, shelter, safety, security, mental health needs, physical health needs, all of that fun stuff. So that's the definition of foster care. So then, as the foster care liaison, essentially, my role is just to, it's the point of contact for the district. So when a learner is placed in formal foster care, the state then sends over what's called a notification of placement, letting the districts know that this learner is in the custody of a agency. And then it gives us that information of where they're placed, who that worker is. And so then really, my role is, because I only serve two of our schools, I really just forward that on to the social workers of each of those schools. And then that school social worker really takes over for those kids in their schools. And then either the school social worker or someone from the school should be really attending the child and family team meetings. And at those team meetings, that's really the permanency plan meetings for our learners. And then really just giving school updates, you know, what growth are we seeing from those students? But then also listening for possible placement changes and addressing those. If, again, if we're able to keep them in their current school, that's really what we would love to do. Doesn't always happen, depending on where that placement is located and transportation and all of that. And then really, our foster kiddos have our school social workers involved, but we're maybe not as involved because they also have, you know, their legal guardian through whichever agency they're placed with. And then also just those wraparound services that typically those agencies already have in place for those kiddos. If they don't, we absolutely can work with them and their teams. It just, it feels like we're just not always as involved with those teams because they already have those services in place. So, yeah, that's kind of the foster care piece. I think that's it. Any questions?
I do have a couple. So one of them is, are the climbing numbers in homelessness in direct correlation of or proportion to our community growth or our school growth?
I can take this if you want, Bridgette.
Sure.
We saw some of our initial growth really coming from our expansion, probably of social workers and buildings, and being able to identify more of that child find, along with some of the Title I requirements and the McKinney-Bento law requiring that we do professional learning around this topic every year, which helps more of our educators and staff working with kids aware and referring families and learners to our social workers to determine identification, to meeting that criteria. So we saw some rise in numbers over the years, we believe, because of really an improved and increased child find, which was in direct correlation, probably of the increase in requirements with the law as well. But yes, we would also probably see some of it happening also because our community is growing at a rate. And so that is also impacting our numbers to continue to grow, maybe slightly faster than what we're seeing other school districts growing with some of these numbers.
So then would you say that, I mean, if you take out the factor for the early identification or the, I mean, improved identification, then going forward, do you say that we're doing a better job of getting supports where people are not finding or claiming than compared to other districts? I'm just trying to get my head around.
Sure.
Because anytime you see a climbing number for something like homelessness, it's not a good thing, you don't want to be seeing that. But the flip side is, is I know how substantial our growth is. And so I just, that's what I'm trying to tease apart a little bit. And it's okay if you don't know either, I'm just curious.
I definitely, well, I guess I don't know, you know, prior to me being here. When I started, though, I was 100% working with our homeless families. So that was my, 100% of my job was looking for these kids and getting them the support that they need. I do know we're pretty comparable to Fargo Public Schools. So I would probably say that it's, we're more, we're more aware and just, just more aware of the program and asking those questions. We also have it on our registration, where families can answer what their living situation is. So I think that's been a big help. And I think that was new, I don't, was that when I, 2016, 17, when we had to put that on the registration? So that was probably a big part of it, too, is people were kind of starting to self-identify a little bit.
I think like with our free reduced lunch, we have the same problem, that they don't always want to identify on those forms, that they are homeless or they are poor or. So I think that we've done a lot better job of identifying those kids over the years. Maybe not all of them, but definitely better.
Bridgette, just a quick question. This is Vince. You talked a little bit about like, you know, shelters and what have you, but are there any faith-based initiatives in the community that supports, that we partner with, that we can better support our learners who are dealing with homelessness?
It's hard, like specifically with homeless, we have, I guess, support in which way?
Whether it's, you know, like supplies?
Okay.
Or things of that nature?
Yeah, it's not even just faith-based specifically. We have lots of different groups and agencies reaching out, wanting to support not just homeless, but like just students in poverty in general. Some of, two of the, probably the biggest ones, like for homeless, would be Matthew's Voice Project. And they, every year, they do like a holiday gift drive. So any student that we have identified already, they will support their families during the holidays, in terms of gifts. And then throughout the school year, they're always asking us what our needs might be, whether that be hygiene, or gas cards, or grocery cards, or clothing. So they're always reaching out, like, asking what we need. And then during this, or right before our summer break, they will typically do like a summer bag, where it's got maybe sunscreen and some snacks and the hygiene products and things like that. And then Sue Barron with Golden Drive Homeless Kids. You've probably seen her out and about. And she's got the big yellow boxes everywhere, partners with Culvers and many other agencies. She's awesome to work with, too, and she's always reaching out, asking, always donating tons of food. I don't know, Sue, she, yeah, everything, like, she's, yeah, she's always reaching out. And then we have other businesses, too, like, that will reach out at random times, asking if there's needs that we have. So I wouldn't say even just faith-based, but just the community in general has been really great. And we typically are able to meet those, those basic needs for our homeless students. It's the bigger ones, like housing, that they need. But yeah, so we have a great community working with us.
Thank you, Bridgette.
All right, any other questions?
Just a wonderful job those ladies do for those kids, man. Amazing.
Because one kid is too many.
Yeah.
I think there's 14 of us now, right, Alicia? Yeah, so 14 of us in the district.
That's phenomenal. Well, thank you all for coming and sharing that information every year. It's nice to get an update where we sit. And if there's something that we need to do differently, you got to reach out. Or if we need help in our community, let us know what we need to do, too. So, all right, thanks so much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to our board reports. Yeah, learner advisory board, are you going to do that, or is Tricia?
Tricia.
Tricia, are you going to give us a quick update on that?
Hi, Kim. Can you hear me okay, volume-wise? Okay, awesome. So yeah, we've now met with all three learner advisory boards and talked about the failed referendum, got feedback from the three main high schools. And all of the grades were present and representative. So a lot of information. In fact, I have it laid out, and it's pages and pages of information. So I'll try to sum it up really quick. When we talked about the failed referendum and the learners were asked about, you know, how do you, what do you have for us in general? They came back with just that there wasn't a lot of awareness about it. They weren't, you know, totally sure what the referendum was all about. And I think overall, one of the big themes that they gave us was just communication, more communication, different communication is needed, both to the families and then in the schools. Their feedback was, we just need more communication to us in the school day. So that was interesting. For all three groups, we brought up the sheet of ice because that seemed to be a point of contention. And I would say there was a mixed response at best. A lot of times, the learners were just kind of not seeing the need right now. And that was across all three schools. So I would say West Fargo High probably had the strongest response in support of the ice, if I were to just take a read off of the facial expressions and some of the comments. All of the learners supported the rehab of elementary schools or the expansion of our elementary schools that need it, and the land investment. They feel that knowing how property prices are going up to invest in property, even if we don't build a building on it, but that we could sell later, you know, to put towards a different building or a different space, they were in support of. And they were really concerned about overcrowding. So if it was West Fargo High, they've been there, done that. If it was Cheyenne, you know, they're there now. And Horace, those, some of those learners are bouncing between the buildings and they just all were saying, you know, we're going to be full. We, even Horace was saying, right now, we feel full. So it was, they were pretty passionate about making sure that there was support for continued expansion for our buildings. And I would say in general, there was support for safety measures and getting all of our schools equitable on what we need for safety. Addressing overcrowding, there was very interesting responses. Mr. Williams was really good at facilitating here. But each time he tried to pitch year-round school, they would shut down fast. But that said, the learners had a lot of really cool ideas. So they were really, if I were to like sum it up, they were really interested in having options for some of these alternative ideas or concepts, but they didn't really want to be forced to go one way or another. So whether it was, you know, adding in some distance learning classes or changing up the layout of the school day, or maybe electing to go to summer school to knock out some of their required courses, that was appealing to them. But just as long as it wasn't going to school in the summer mandatory. And then there was just a huge plethora of wants. So every high school, I think, touched on parking. Saying, there's not enough parking. There might be if we're lucky in the fall when we go back to school. But by the time all the new drivers are through, towards the end of the school year or mid-school year, it starts getting really crunched and a lot more accidents. And so they, I just wasn't prepared to hear about parking, but we heard it at all three locations. And then the other the other thing that was really interesting is West Fargo High School and Horace High School seem to have really good perspective on the differences in equity. And so both of those schools commented on that they want flex seating in West Fargo High School. And they all commented, which Horace said, oh, our stairs are learning stairs, not a big deal. And West Fargo High said that would be so awesome to have. I thought that was really interesting to have and have not in the switch on that. And then the other thing that West Fargo High pointed out was a black box. They were really fascinated with that option. So I'm sure I'm missing stuff, but I just tried to touch on a little bit of everything. And I would say that flex seating went in the, the classroom pods, so to speak. The learners were talking about, we don't really need lockers anymore and takes up a lot of building space. And we'd rather open our classrooms and have that hallway space to be used for learning environments where we can break out, you know, have breakout groups. Where teachers can, you know, educators can see what we're doing and interact with us, but not not have to always be in that structured desk setting. I think I've pretty much speed talked through this.
I think that sounds like a lot, Tricia.
Fascinating. There's so much to learn when you spend time with these young adults. I can't even really say kids.
Thank you for doing that too. Really good. Representing us so well.
I love it. Love it.
All right, any questions for Tricia? Otherwise we'll move on to. All right, next we have planning and development. John, I don't know how much you want to go through since we have Tony and his crew here as an action item, since it was our only item. The other day, if you wanna do something specific you want to share before we get to the action item?
Yeah, I just, I, you know, kind of highlight a few different things. And it was a great conversation. Certainly, guys, I appreciate kind of the in-depths. You know, getting into the nitty gritty and really trying to dig into really kind of what I, I think different pilots kind of lay out a little bit differently. And, and I think in a true sense, this would be what I would kind of consider a pilot. You know, really where we have a local business that wants to expand and, and keep their business locally and, and continue that growth and and hire, you know, families in there and, and continue the, you know, provide good paying jobs and, and so on. And that's really kind of that economic growth that we want to, you know, use the pilots for. And, and so I think that really kind of fit the bill along with, you know, some of the different, the tax base that we talked about, you know, the, the biggest standout, you know, again, was just kind of the difference where it's, you know, we're, we're once we rezone it, the tax base will just be tremendously increased and, and certainly will help, you know, the overall taxes and, and for that area, you know, literally from, you know, five hundred dollars to, you know, fifty six thousand. So it's, it's really just a huge base that, that's kind of growing and that's just a start. So I, I think, you know, the, the ten year, you know, pilot, certainly this is exactly where it needs to be. And, and just kind of the last, you know, numbers, dollars, cents there. You know, ultimately, you know, with the special assessments, which, you know, we've talked about quite a bit too. You know, they're, they're higher than the cost of the, the land itself. So essentially without the pilot, they're upside down already. So you know, kind of those three different areas that really stood out in our conversation. And, and I felt that, you know, I guess I'm for the pilot. And once we get there, we can talk more about that. But it's, you know, really felt that that was, it fits the need and, and it makes sense as we kind of go forward for certainly the business. We're happy to have the local business continue expanding in, in the area along with being able to come alongside them and, and help offer this, along with it fits our needs just kind of for the growth. So.
Thank you for that. If you guys are okay, is that right? If we move the pilot to the next action item, then we'll do SRO next after that. Heather, are you okay if we bump you down one? She must be okay. Let's go ahead and do the review and take action on the pilot request from border states. Do you guys want to introduce yourselves? And if you could, maybe the attachment?
I'm Jim Gilmore. I'm with the city of Fargo.
Hi, Ryan Oss. I'm with the Greater Fargo More Economic Development Corporation.
Joey Ness, also with the Greater Fargo MRC.
Good evening. I'm Tony Serati, representing the border states.
And before we get started, I just want to let everybody know that my son does, does work for border states. He does not, he is not the top executive. He does not make a million dollars. He's in the lower level. But I just wanted to share because sometimes when, when we talk about these projects, you wonder where the process is. Okay. He has no influence whatsoever on what border states does as a business. So I just want to share that. But he loves working there. All right. So I don't know if you want to start on anybody or?
Yeah, I, having missed last Monday's, you know, planning and development, I think John sort of laid, laid it out well. I think the memo sort of outlined the packet as it was submitted to the city of Fargo. So if there are any questions from board members who were unable to attend last week, we obviously have representatives of the project and the city and the EDC to, to answer those. But just again, at, at the highest level, any tax incentive over five years does require both county and school board approval, which is why they're sitting here this evening. And this is on the, the agenda ultimately for, for your consideration. The guidance that we received from planning and development was to move forward with a motion to recommend approval. And so really that's for discussion as it relates to this potential development project in the northern part of our school district. Most often these have been occurring with the city of West Fargo. We were also grateful to share some geography with the city of Fargo in the industrial park near the interstate. So.
Well, they showed where it shows this is bad. And we did, they did send you everybody the packet of information. So play the chance to look at it. Is there any questions?
Our plan is to break around the summer. We think that's where we're at from a trajectory standpoint, the facility being open sometime in the first quarter of twenty twenty six.
I should note, the city, Fargo, Fargo City Commission voted unanimously to approve this application at its last meeting. You know, this is a project that could probably land in several different cities. And so we're trying to put our best offer forward, try to keep them here in this metro area. We're fortunate to have a company like Border State to be headquartered here when it look at how big they are. It's hard to call them a local company. They're really all over the country and we're fortunate to have this headquarters and I think it'd be interesting to hear a little bit about your philosophy on that distribution center and how you're, this is sort of the first one of these and how much you're growing.
Share how many states you're into since everyone's probably not familiar with the company?
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to. So let me know if you want more detail. I'll try to keep it high level. But so you mentioned Jim, so border states. For those not familiar, we're a structural distribution and services company. We've been around since nineteen fifty-two. We're headquartered here in Fargo. When I started the company twenty-one years ago, we were a three hundred billion dollar revenue company. Excited to share that this, in February, we just passed four billion in our twelve month rolling revenue. So tremendous growth. We're in twenty-nine states. We have one hundred and twenty-five locations. Well established here in the Fargo community. We have both our operating branch, which is just off the twenty-fifth street and south of Main Avenue. And then our corporate headquarters, which opened up in twenty nineteen, which is the facility just to the west of I twenty-nine south. You're familiar with that. So we employ somewhere around three hundred and fifty people in the Fargo Morgan metro community. So to talk about kind of this project itself, so we have really tremendous growth aspirations for the next five to ten years. I mentioned four billion revenue. We have a, a plan to get us to ten, twelve billion revenue by twenty thirty. With growth comes the need to scale. And right now, we, each branch that we have that serves customers, really kind of final mile distribution operates as its own entity. Like our Fargo branch I mentioned on the community here. Really, this, this model is redesigning our supply chain to have more of a central distribution for a facility that really handles a lot of inbound material. Consolidation, logistics, really to optimize and move materials to our, our branches to really deliver final mouse solutions to customers. So this is a really big change for us that we believe is needed, necessary for us to scale. So this facility that was mentioned on the north side of the industrial park will be about three hundred and fifty thousand plus square foot facility. Employ sixty plus people, employee owners. One thing I mentioned, I forgot to mention is we are a hundred percent employee owned company. We're actually in the top forty largest employer companies in the United States. So every employee who would be full time in this facility would be an employee owner of border states automatically part of our stock package and owner of company. Seventy-five percent of the roles in this building would be full time warehouse professionals with the other twenty-five percent being leadership roles, maintenance, things of that nature in the facility. So probably going into too much detail, but just to, you know, we talked about the kind of the challenges with this property. I just want to reiterate, you know, we're a Fargo based company. We, we evaluated multiple communities for this facility. It doesn't need to be here. But as we look at the upper Midwest, we want it to be here. We're a Fargo company. This is home for us. This is our community. That's going to be still our business. So we have a fiduciary responsibility. And as we've got into this project, I would say Fargo of all the communities we have evaluated, apples to apples, kind of the face value was not. So really this pilot program is putting us in a position to, we believe strongly consider Fargo in our final decision for this, for this facility and make it more competitive by the communities.
And from an economic development standpoint, I just give some perspective. Over the last five years, we've, we've supported, worked with a number of projects similar in nature and ranging from manufacturing, software, other logistics and distribution. This, in terms of economic impact and capital investment, around forty-six million dollars between the, the capital investment and building and equipment. This is the one hundred and thirty-two projects of the last five years. This is the, the top five for largest project. So think about the soybean plant in Castleton being the largest at four hundred million. Amazon being the second largest that we've worked on at a hundred and thirty million. And so border states, this project represents, you know, good company in terms of the level of impact and the capital investment.
Probably know it too. There are, there are actually large enough sites that this could be expanded to six hundred thousand square meters in the long term. So getting their foot in the door here will probably have future growth out there.
All right, any questions? Anyways, I don't understand motion.
I move to authorize the request of ten year pilot, border states electorate.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Is that Tricia?
Sorry. Yes.
That's all right. Sounded like you. Thank you. I went first and second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the pilot request for border states, say aye.
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 Any, any knows? All right, motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you all for coming. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome to say if you like. All right, let's move on to taking action on initial SRO. Heather, are you up for the conversation?
I sure am. All right. So the memo before you guys this evening is a request to add our ninth school resource officer to our program, which would make us the largest school district program in the state of North Dakota. This would be an elementary specific position. Right now, we have two SROs that serve our fifteen elementary sites. For the last couple of years, we know that we've been running them ragged, just based on the, the behavior reports that we get. The feedback from our principals when we evaluate, when we evaluate the SROs saying the area for improvement is we wish we could clone them and we wish we had more services. We wish we could see them for relationship building and, you know, see those lovable dogs a little more than when they're just coming to help out in emergency situations. So this spring, we undertook a conversation with the police department and their new chief, Chief Nielsen, and asked about the possibility of adding another SRO to start to divide out those elementary schools a little bit more evenly. Our memorandum of understanding with the city does have precedence in it. That indicates that the school district would pay one hundred percent of officers that service schools outside the city limits of West Fargo, just because the West Fargo Police Department's tax base is only from the city of West Fargo. While the school district's tax, they, tax base is from the county and the city of Fargo as well. So just kind of trying to right size where those tax dollars are coming from. So we pay a hundred percent of the officers that serve at Heritage Middle School and Horace High School. And then, as I mentioned previously, this would be our third elementary SRO, and it's about one-third of our elementary schools that have a zip code outside of the West Fargo five eight oh seven eight. So it seemed to, to track. It made sense to our team that this would be another one of those one hundred percent officers. Once we, or if the board approves this position, then the city commission would take it under advisement. If the city commission approves it, we would hope to post the position yet this spring. Find out who that individual is so they can start backfilling that role on patrol so that we can have this SRO join us right away in August.
This is silly question. I don't know why. I don't know. Do they have to be a police officer to be an SRO in schools in North Dakota? And is that true in all the other states?
They do have to be a licensed law enforcement officer to be an SRO in North Dakota. I'm not sure about other states. I would believe so in order to be considered a, a true school resource officer. Just because that is part of the, the triad concept from their national association. But there's maybe some schools that use more like a, a monitor or a watchdog or a security type program, but they wouldn't be a true SRO.
I was trying to figure out how our smaller, smaller districts can have SROs when they're lucky if they can get police department people in general and then take them to go into the buildings. They must face, it must be a very difficult task for them.
Yes. And then, yep. And in a lot of those smaller communities, it, it's definitely a different look. You know, the, the school resource officer maybe stops by and, and has lunch versus being stationed there throughout the day. And then would just respond to calls. So we're, we're definitely lucky for many reasons to be in the metro with such close access to our first responders.
Lot of times it's a high patrol officer or a sheriff in rural. And they have a little, they'll stop by, have a little office space. We debated this out in the legislature when we were trying to get the, the bill was introduced for fifteen percent of your budget going to security. So we had to.
So you had to find out. I should have just asked you, Jim. That's a good point. All right. Any questions for Heather in regards to the SRO?
Heather, I do have a question for you. This is Jessica Jackson. How do we know our, how do we measure, ultimately the question is this? How do we measure our return on investment for SROT? How do we know when to add another or, you know, squawking and overall that return on investment?
So I would say that we have done that maybe more informally through their evaluation process. Every, every January, February, the principals, assistant principals and myself sit down and have really candid conversations about the role that the school resource officer plays in their, in their building and across our district. And in all of those conversations, I don't know that I've, I've ever received a, we would be we would be fine without that person in our building. More often than not, it's can we get more of them? Even at our secondary schools who have one full time officer already, they have asked if they could have two officers. It was several years ago, Superintendent Sluddy, maybe you would remember, we actually asked our principals to do a forced choice about if we were looking to add more teachers, would we be willing, or no, I think it was deans and assistant principals. Would we be better served getting rid of our school resource officers and repurposing those dollars for deans and assistant principals? And that was not, that was not a direction that they wanted to go. So I don't have anything, you know, super official in terms of an ROI, but certainly anecdotally, they're very much a valued part of those administrative teams.
Thank you, Heather.
Yeah.
I know from what I've observed in the Horace area with the SRO at the middle school, I, just that relationship building factor has been phenomenal. They just had a readathon, I think it was last month and
They taped her to the wall.
Yes, but more than once. All three grades elected to taper to the wall. So, or at least two of the, two, three? Yeah, so.
Tapered to the wall.
It was a challenge if they met their reading minutes. Yep. And they Yeah, it was a challenge if they met their reading minutes. Yep. And they they did. And my son said it was almost worth reading in gym for, almost. So, um, it was a impressive thing and she, she's such a great sport, but the to know that our learners have someone that they trust in law enforcement.
She's better.
And they have that connection. It's it's impressive, you know, because they'll come in and they'll be goofy with her or they'll pass her in the hall and high fives and and she's got that relationship built up where they feel comfortable joking with her, but being serious too. Um, it's a very unique relationship that I I really, really am grateful that we have. That's without the comfort animals.
Let's see. Thank you.
Bless you.
Thanks for sharing that, Tricia. I'll have to look for the taped on the wall officers. I thought I had a picture, but not.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll share a picture. I'll send one.
Uh, send one to me.
Yeah, Todd.
That's a lot better than highs in the face. So I'm going to give him that.
Todd just got silly stray this last weekend.
Silly straight.
You ever go to night to night and they would at the park and you see Todd Pearson walk through with the kids just flock to him. He's like Mr. West Fargo, superstar.
And I'm guessing he probably gets kids that they need something aren't afraid to talk to him, which is exactly what we're talking about, that connection that they wouldn't normally do. All right. I would entertain a motion unless you have any other questions, comments or concerns.
I move to approve the addition of a ninth SRO in partnership with the West Fargo Police Department for the twenty four, twenty five school year.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
I will second.
Thank you, Tricia. Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, Tricia. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? All right. All those in favor for approving the SRO, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right. Um, our last action, I have the review and take action on the staffing request.
And this is the season for staffing requests and this one's playing the alternate to Brittany Nagle and she may ask for support from Mr. Williams as well.
Well, I will let him jump in if he would like to. Otherwise, I will share that this uh memo contains all secondary staffing. Um, so you will see a request for nine FTEs, all teaching FTEs at um several different locations. Um, they are broken out very specifically. So you can see where we're adding them and by partial or full FTEs at either Horus High, West Fargo High School, Liberty has a point five in there. Um, and then there's a few at Cheyenne High and Heritage Middle School. Um, just for your knowledge, you'll look down in the verbiage in this memo. Um, and even though there isn't necessarily increases at all of our locations for next year, um, what you don't see in this memo is that there is movement of uh FTEs between some of those schools that's not listed on here. So there are educator vacancies that are moving from Cheyenne over to Horus High. Um, and those things we don't put on memos just because those FTEs already exist. Um, but what we're doing is trying to balance out with those those numbers in the courses where they need them. So um, you can see that at Cheyenne, we're adding uh CTE teachers. And the reason for that is because their uh registration shows that we need to increase that the numbers there are the FTEs there. Um, so even though the majority of our growth is at Horus High or at um Heritage Middle School, you'll see that we have some of those FTEs allocated based on where the registration and need was for those specific teacher FTEs.
Thank you, Brittany. Can I, can I just chime in for one second?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Um, uh, you hit the nail on the head in terms of talking about the CTE uh pieces. And as our district transitions and, you know, starts making movement toward the academy, um, it's imperative that we get those CTE programs up and running. And so when you look across the board, like whether at Cheyenne or at Horus uh High, um that our educators are doing a phenomenal job getting those learners um excited to enroll in those courses. So as we transition into the academy, that should be a seamless um move for our educators and for our learners. And then one piece I did want to point out is um we've seen an influx of um our new Americans entering into the region. And so uh we currently are adding a point five FTE to Liberty and also what to West Fargo High. And um just speaking with Dakota Brain, our EO coordinator, um those numbers are going to steadily increase. And so um as we plan our staffing uh for, you know, the the next couple of years, I'm pretty sure you'll see an increase in need for FTEs to support our EO uh learners. So.
You said that we're going to need them, Vince. Do we know that there's going to be a influx of students coming in like we used to hear from, since we don't have Luther Sales and Services, I'm not sure who brings all our families in anymore. Have we heard something that?
Yes, we have heard that we're going to, I I I'm not prepared with the exact number. Mr. Williams, do you recall the exact number that we were given from Dakota?
No, but I can, I can pull it up.
We'll find it. But yes, we're going to see an increase and you recall that we have already um added another welcome center at the elementary level, the L teacher, and that was also based on that information.
That's a good, so when will we determine the classes that are not increasing that we need to reduce our FTEs based on the enrollment doesn't show they're going to be taking anymore? And we don't need that many classes. So when does that happen, Vince?
So when we're going through the staffing process, um Levi and I, um, I don't want to take credit for it, but we use a a spreadsheet that sets the the minimum and maximum uh target number for um whether or not we're going to offer that course. And so if we see that um a department or a building is overstaffed, say in in the area of math and another building needs uh supporting math, then we would shift those FTEs that Brittany talked about uh to where uh the need is at. So we've already done that this year.
Hey. What is the number, Vince, for class? Is it eighteen?
No, it did, it depends on the the course. So like our core courses or those um you think about, yeah, so you think about like an English one course, um it would be like twenty five learners.
We reviewed, there's a indicator, I believe it's in OE five related to class sizes. Um, we brought the, it's got three hundred and some lines in it. Um, I think we'd reviewed it at a governance committee meeting some time ago, but you know, generally speaking, there's kind of regular classes like Mr. Williams referred to with, you know, your world histories, your algebra, you know, twos. There are music classes, which are obviously loaded a a little bit differently, given the size and, you know, participation. Um, CTE or other electives that involve a lot of equipment, which are generally lower, um, just based on the constraints of the the equipment we have available. Um, and then uh EL, just given the the language acquisition needs of students, we have historically um not run those classes as large. So generally speaking, it sort of falls into one of those sort of four buckets, which dictates, you know, out, um, each class has its own line, but the kind of target minimum and maximum is uh is sort of set within those parameters. We do have slightly larger allowances for our advanced placement courses. I know we discussed that at governance, that we want to make sure that those are available um for our students, you know, desiring accelerated coursework. And so I think usually where we require fifteen students to run a section, um, I believe we've dropped that down to ten uh just to lower the bar a little bit to make sure that that those courses are available for uh for students. But if if there's only nine, which was the case in several, you know, several times this year, kind of to your point, Patty, those nine FTEs is really the net. Um, but if if you, you know, looked at the gross swaps, um, it would be several times that, um, just given
I figured so.
A French teacher moving there, a math teacher moving here, um, sort of based on uh using those uh Power School registrations as sort of our starting point.
Then we're not at the point that we're going to say we are dropping an entire program or an entire language or an entire art program um due to budgeting. Let's hope that we never have to have that conversation.
Yeah. And Patty, to answer your question, um, we Fargo is projected to receive a hundred and fifteen refugees um by September from October twenty twenty three to September twenty twenty four.
Okay.
It's done through the state now through Health and Human Services.
That's not as soon as I expected, though. Thank you, Vince.
Yeah, no problem.
It's a good problem to have because when I'm out west, so many of those districts are losing students and cutting staff members and we're just booming here.
Yeah, but do you like that? All right. Is there any other questions? As though I otherwise I'd entertain a motion to approve the staffer request as presented.
I move to approve the staffing requests for twenty twenty four, twenty five as presented.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, John. Is there any further discussion? All right. Hearing down all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right. Uh, moving on to our consent agenda.
This Tricia. I was gonna say I'm going to approve.
Thanks, Tricia. Is there a second?
Second.
Jim, second. All right. Is there any discussion with the consent agenda? All right. All those in favor approve the consent consent agenda, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? Hey, motion carries. All right. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Just a reminder of our next uh public feedback gathering session on Wednesday, March twenty seventh at Cheney Middle School. And it sounds like all of our board members will participate that evening.
Unfortunately, I won't. I I will have to decline that one.
Very well, we can make that adjustment. And we will be in the main cafeteria area, correct, Heather?
Correct.
And then we go with governance on Monday?
We are planning to have governance on Monday.
Right. Anything else for you?
Not for me.
Thank you. I don't have anything too exciting to share either. Um, see you all on Wednesday and we'll go from there. I will be gone. The next meeting is going to be in New Orleans for the ACE public, Jessica, if you're around, you can lead the meeting that day. And I don't think I get back in time.
Yes.
All right. Weekend officially be adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Stay warm.
Thank you. Drive safe.
Thank you all.